I'll indicate that all of the members of the board are present in person with the exception of Mr. Ramon. So I understand that he's traveling on business, so we need a motion and a vote to permit him to attend by. And such a motion. Mr. Ketter makes the motion, Mr. Moran seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Welcome to the reading, say. I understand there's no public comment to be approved. And that we have no minutes to discuss, so I'll turn to the public hearing for text amendment twenty-four, I'm sorry, T three twenty-four. That is a Well, I'll just call on Mr. Haas to be sworn in and introduce the text amendment.
You decide with your testimony about to give this clause out here and be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and I'll do that.
Yes.
Well, before you start, Paul, I should indicate that there are the text amendment has been sent to all of the various communities within DuPage Township. Addison Township has filed an objection, and we have a lot to support that objection. No comments received from the other entities. So with that, go right ahead.
Paul Haas, H O S S, I'm planning and zoning administration coordinator for DuPage County Building and Zoning Department. I have four exhibits to present tonight. We've included those four exhibits in your packets. The first exhibit is the T three twenty-four text amendment public hearing notice. That includes the proposed text that we would like to amend the zoning ordinance with. The second group is, the second exhibit is a group exhibit. It is entitled T three twenty-four text amendments, and it is a map of every township in the county. Which in, you'll see in the legend indicates where the principal arterial roads are located, which is the one of the bases for the proposed text amendments tonight. Also, there is a area that is zoned R three or R four in those zoning districts, and those are color coordinated. And in those R three, R four zoning districts, it's a little difficult to see, but I do apologize, but our staff and our fellow have done a nice job. And I think detailing this, anything that is outlined in red is a candidate property. And then the last item in the, in the legend is the number of properties that would be eligible if this proposed text amendment were passed to be, have a conversion. And for instance, in Wayne Township, there are fifty-four properties, and we do that through all of the township properties. Once again, the dark blue line is the principal arterial. The colored is the zoning districts and the red areas are the properties that would be eligible. Exhibit number three is a picture exhibit showing a sample principal arterial office use conversion, which is a permitted use. Now in the county zoning ordinance, it was a code change that we made about twenty years ago to allow for a principal arterial property that meets certain standards to be converted from a single-family home into an office use. This is just an example of, of one of many properties that have taken advantage of this as a right conversion. Shows a piece of property on Seventy-Fifth Street, which was what we call a clean and lean property, a property that had, was essentially abandoned. And we had to take court action against it. It was eventually converted into a office. And the second picture depicts what that office conversion looks like now. And then the fourth document that we are submitting as an exhibit is an excerpt. It's entitled excerpt from the DuPage County zoning ordinance, and it's relative to the requirements for off-street parking and loading in a single-family residential neighborhood. And it also gives the third page, the scheduled parking requirements for both single-family and two-family dwelling units. And those are items that I'll be discussing tonight. So I'd like to tender those four exhibits for the record.
Okay, we'll accept them.
Chairman of the zoning board appeals, the county board and the county board chair began an initiative back in two thousand and twenty-three, at the beginning of the year. To work on what they're calling housing solutions. The county established an ad hoc housing solutions committee. Over the course of about two years now, the ad hoc housing committee, which is a committee of the whole, has heard presentations from county staff, from agencies that are engaged in housing programs, both affordable housing and workforce housing, from homeowners, from developers, from builders, to talk about the lack of housing opportunities, not only in unincorporated DuPage County, but in DuPage County as a whole and throughout the Chicagoland area. As part of those efforts, the county has, while we have not established a program especially for housing yet, the county has, county board has authorized me to move forward at the county development committee on a few initiatives that deal with land use regulations. You may recall that in the past year, we brought to this board two changes to the zoning code that dealt with scaling and scaling up more opportunities for housing to be developed in the county. One of those had to do with the ability to have existing lots of record that were below a certain size to have those lots be made buildable lots as a right. We also brought to you a accessory dwelling unit, ADUs, as a conditional use. Both of those eventually were approved by the county board and are now law. We've had a few people take advantage of that. This next iteration, this text amendment is along those same lines, trying to enable more housing opportunities for housing and especially rental housing in the unincorporated areas. And this essentially merges two issues that we have in the county. One is the ability to have more rental opportunities in the county, and also to manage better properties that are in disrepair and which are located on principal arterial roadways. And it is the presence of the properties, the single-family residential properties and principal arterial roadways that are essentially creating hardship for the properties really to be saleable at a fair market rate. More importantly, many of these properties have gone into disrepair because people just aren't taking care of them anymore. Many of them are candidates for coenforcement. And also, in some instances, candidates for our clean and lean program where we actually file suit in circuit court and ask the judge to allow the county to come in and clean the properties up, and in some instances demolish the properties because it's just simply not being taken care of. That's the rationale for us bringing this text amendment forward. Some of you were on the board when we adopted the principal arterial office overlay district. This proposed text amendment is similar in nature to that same idea, only it is to allow for the conversion of a single-family home in a single-family residential zoning district into two units where right now, as a right, that home is only allowed to be converted or only allowed to be used as a single dwelling unit. This proposal would allow someone who meets all the criteria, and I'll get into the criteria in just a second, be able to convert that home into two dwelling units, meet every other requirement in the single-family residential zoning district except one, and that is, well, two. One would be that you would be able to have two units. The second one is that you'd have to meet the minimum parking requirements for a two-family dwelling unit. As part of exhibit number four, on page three, I've shared with you the parking requirements for a single-family dwelling unit, which are two parking spaces per unit. These are minimum. For two-family unit, it would be two point five, so they would be, people would be required to put more parking on the property. Having said that, however, in this circumstance, someone converting their single-family home to a two-family home would have to meet all of their requirements of a single-family residential property, including and you can see on exhibit four, I highlighted that for you, all of the other parking requirements for a single-family dwelling. And the most important one there that I, that I think the zoning board appeals is aware of, and we've seen in the past, is that in a single-family residential property, you're only entitled to have six passenger vehicles. You can't have anymore. So even though we would be requiring more parking per dwelling unit, use the, the property could still not exceed six total vehicles on the property. The idea there is, is that some of the concerns that we anticipate would come out is, is that if we allow for two dwelling units on a single-family property, there could be an increase of vehicles and traffic and congestion on the property. It's our belief that with these proposed changes, while requiring more parking spaces, you still can't go above what you're entitled to on a single-family property right now, which would be six. Getting into the details of this, principal arterial roadways are roadways that carry a minimum of twenty-five thousand movements a day. Most of these roadways actually carry in excess of forty thousand movements a day. And we have itemized, similar to what we did in the principal arterial office use, we've itemized the actual roadways and the stretches of roadways that would qualify. Only change that we've made to the current principal arterial roadway grouping is Lamont Road. The principal arterial roadways are essentially state roadways. Route eighty-three going from east to west, Route eighty-three, Route fifty-three, Route fifty-nine, north going, I'm sorry, that would be north-south, going east to west, you've got Irving Park Road, Lake Street, North Avenue, Seventy-Fifth Street. Those are some of the major roads, and most of those roads are state roadways, and once again, they carry twenty-five thousand movements a day or more. Most of those roads, they are principal arterial roadways, they are limited access highways, so even though they have single-family dwelling unit driveways that come in and off of those roadways, if there was a new development to occur on those properties, those developments would be limited in terms of access. It'd be very difficult to get new access on that, those properties. In addition, we're requiring that these single-family residential properties would have to take direct access to those principal arterial roadways. You can see when you look at the maps, we have some properties that are on principal arterial roadways, but they're corner lots, and they take access from the side likely residential roadway. Those properties would not qualify because they are not as impacted as the properties that have direct access to principal arterial roadway. In addition, we would require that any property that would be available for this text amendment, the, the property would have to be an existing single-family home, existing at the time of passage of this ordinance. So let's just say for discussion purposes that this was to be approved by the county board on January one, the effective date would be January one, twenty twenty-five. And any house built after nineteen, after twenty twenty-five that was a new house on a principal arterial roadway, they may meet all of the requirements, but they wouldn't meet the date requirement. So anything new that would be built would not qualify. It's to assist all those properties that are existing right now. It's unlikely that someone would build a new house on a principal arterial roadway, but it locks into place those properties that are existing at the time of approval of the county board. In addition, it would the principal arterial dwelling conversion would only be for the principal building. It couldn't be for a detached building, existing detached or otherwise. And it could only be for the existing building. You're not, you would not be able to add on to the building. You wouldn't be able to put an extension on, room addition or something like that. The only thing that you would be entitled to do is do cosmetic and maintenance on the building. You could paint it, re-roof it, recite it, things like that, but you wouldn't be able to make any additions to, to it. In addition, similar to all the other, the, the principal arterial office, it would have to be owner occupied. So one of the dwelling units would have to be owned and occupied by the owner of the property. They can rent the other dwelling unit out, but it would have to be owner occupied. The idea of all these rules and regulations are that the single-family home on a principal arterial roadway is being impacted by the principal arterial roadway, and the value of it has diminished because of that. The, there, in addition, some of the land that was available as part of that property may have been taken over time because of the expansion of the roadway. Now, someone may have been compensated by that, and then they've gotten money through a kind of Asian proceeding. But based on our coenforcement efforts, it, it seems clear that they're not putting that money back into the property. They're not fixing up the property or landscaping or putting fences up. They're just taking their money and they're doing something else with it, but they're not putting it back into any equity in the house. So we have properties that are disrepair because people just don't see the value in, in improving their property given the fact that it's on a principal arterial way, arterial roadway, it's impacted by that roadway. So we think that, that this proposed text amendment will do a couple of things. It will allow us to continue to have an effective tool relative to coenforcement for these single-family homes that are on these major roadways and cleaning them up. And it'll also give property owners the opportunity to clean them up in a manner that they might be able to make some additional money by having a second dwelling unit on the property. What we've shared with you again in these maps is all of the properties that would be eligible in each township. And overall, I believe there's approximately four hundred and eighty-three properties that would be eligible. That doesn't mean all four hundred and eighty-three or five, approximately five hundred properties are going to take advantage of this. But those properties do now have another opportunity to excuse me, to clean up their properties, to get out of coenforcement, and also to convert their properties to two dwelling units that would provide some rental assistance, much needed rental assistance in unincorporated DuPage County, and for that matter, throughout the county. One of the concerns that we have from the Village of Addison is that and we often see this in any zoning case, is that if these properties were to annex into the municipalities, they would not be consistent with the zoning district that would be annexed into in the city. Completely understand and completely appreciate that. In most instances, these properties are well, not most instances, in all instances, these properties are surrounded by municipalities to the extent that in many instances, the municipalities could fortunately annex these properties under the state statutes. The state statutes require that properties be surrounded by municipalities and the total area be less than sixty acres. Many of these properties that we're talking about are, are surrounded by municipalities and the total contiguous acreage is less than sixty acres. So municipalities have the ability to annex these properties and take control of these properties. We found that some of the reasons why these properties exist the way they do out there is because of the adjacent annexations of properties into municipalities where municipalities have annexed properties, rezoned properties, and developed properties as multifamily, commercial, and in some instances even industrial land uses. And the remainder unincorporated properties still stay as single-family because they just weren't part of the annexation. They either, the developer couldn't get the properties or didn't need the properties, and as a result, these sort of residual properties that are single-family homes are left out in the lurch, and there may be three or four of them immediately adjacent to properties that are municipalities where the municipality has annexed the properties in, demolished the homes, not the municipalities, developers have demolished the homes and built a new commercial, multifamily, and industrial development on it. And that type of development has, in addition, impacted these residential properties as well. So fully understand the objections of the Village of Addison, but the Village of Addison does have the ability to annex these properties in and put them in a zoning district that would be consistent with their zoning ordinances. We found that in the case of Addison, many of these properties that would be annexed into Addison would likely be put into non-residential zoning districts. They'd be put into commercial industrial zoning districts based on where they're located on our maps. We think once again that this will help us deal with coenforcement issues on these properties, and at the same time check another box for us that will avail these property owners to scale up more rental housing in unincorporated area. And with that, I'll take any questions.
In the unlikely event that you missed identifying on our exhibit a property that would otherwise qualify in accordance with the language of the text amendment, I presume that the language of the text amendment controls over this exhibit, is that saying?
Correct.
And I, I assume that was the case. Here's what I don't fully understand. The condition that the a principal arterial conversion shall be occupied by the owner of the property. So there are several scenarios about an owner that undertakes the conversion and then passes away. I, I presume the relief is not extinguished at the death of the owner, but a new owner of the property could purchase the property but would be required to live at the property.
Correct.
And if the, and if the new owner elects not to live, but treat it as a a rental property, the relief is extinguished?
They would be in violation.
So what do you do? Tell the, tell the other tenant to move out?
So what would happen is we'd issue violation notice, and there would be several options available to the property owner. And in theory, even the tenant, and that is they can seek zoning relief to, to ask for a variation to allow, in that particular instance, either variation or more likely a conditional use to be able to allow that second unit to be rented out. And in the absence of that being approved, then we would have to litigate that, and the, the renter would have to leave.
I think you should look at the language before this is finalized and try to anticipate, try to create some language which clarifies these various alternatives. It seems to me.
Understood.
That's my only questions. Is anyone else on the board have a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot this.
Yeah, just regarding, I was wondering, do you foresee any instance where you would see these properties come to us for conditional use and variations or whatever? Or would, would we just be sticking with the parking requirements that we have in here, and then we'll be stuck with that?
The, the intent is to stick with what we have as a right in this ordinance. So certainly anybody can ask for zoning relief, whether it be a conditional use or variation, or they can even come in and ask to rezone the property to multifamily and then, and take up new regulations relative to multifamily. The reason that we, that we're sticking to these regulations is, is that one, we want to make sure that we don't increase the intensity of the operations of the property beyond what ordinarily would be a single-family property. The property is already impacted by the street. It's, it's likely a relatively small property in comparison to the adjacent properties that might be commercial or multifamily. And so we don't want to increase the intensities. We also recognize that likely because you're not able to add on to the property, that the units are going to be relatively small, so they're not going to really be able to accommodate many people. So we just want to keep everything contextually in size with the size of the property, the size of the building, and requiring the minimum parking spaces and also the maximum of not more than six. So it helps with the operation of that property when there's two families living on the property.
Yeah, and getting back to the chairman's point, seems to me that if one of the owner passes away and we get one of these violations, doesn't that diminish the value of the property? Because you would limit, you'd almost have to sell it to either one, somebody that's willing to live in the property as a duplex. But that shrinks who's going to want to have the property. Or second of all, or even having to go through all of the variations and conditional use things, that that's an extrovert, not a person interested in purchasing.
Relative to, there was a thought about making this a conditional use, similar to what we did with the accessory dwelling units. And the reason that we are doing it as a permitted use is that we think that the mitigating factors that allow it to be a permitted use are all these conditions, similar to what we found, similar to what we did with the principal arterial office. The principal arterial office is working. The value of having an owner occupied, what we found, we thought we'd find, and it actually came true in terms of the, the data that supports this, is that the property owner is more committed to taking care of the property where renters aren't. And so if a property owner came forward, and let's say we had a circumstance where the property owner who was living there passed away and did not, and then passed it along to his heirs or his sons, and they didn't want to live in there, they could come in and, and presumably support a hardship, practical difficulty, or unique circumstance that could warm the ability for this to be rented out. Or maybe they could still own it, but they could rent it out to another person, so we would have an owner that would be responsible for the property, and he would be renting out to two different people. So the point there is, is that we would rather err on the side of having an owner living on the property to manage it and take care of it. But there are circumstances where that won't occur, and the zoning relief process would force someone the opportunity to come in and say, in my case, I don't want to live there, but I'll continue, trust me, I'll continue to take care of the property. And the board would place, place conditions on how that owner, even though he's not living there, would continue to manage the property in the same way that we envisioned the owner living on the property would do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just was trying to figure it out, you know?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Mentioned that such as a death and a hardship, they could come in and get conditionals, conditional use somewhat. Doesn't that open the door that once you grant the first one, then the second one has another end around? The whole theory of this, that would have made sense when it was first presented, with the owner living there, he's got a vested interest to keep it up and not let it go down. It just seems to me, as we've seen in the past, once they find a way around it, it just opens the floodgates.
Agreed, a hundred percent. As an example, as an example of that, we have passed new zoning codes in the last, you know, five years that deal with some very specific land uses. And as an example, chickens. We came up with a number of five for chickens. And people have come in here and said, I want six and a rooster. And our, our position has been, but not only the zoning board of appeals position, but the development committee and county board has been, there was, even though it says five, and that's all it says in the ordinance, there was a lot of research that was done that got us to five. And when someone comes in a year later and says, I'll give you six, it's really not that big of a deal. The board has stuck with five for the most part because there is a reason, there is a threshold. And that's the same thing we're talking about here. There's no doubt that a person who lives in his home may not take care of it, and we see that all the time in coenforcement. But there is more of a chance that if a person is living in the home, they'll take care of it. And if someone has a hardship, unique circumstance, or practical difficulties such as a death in the family, they can't live anymore, and they get to come in here and present that to you. And if it makes sense, and it's reasonable, every single case is going to stand on its own, and when it makes sense in that particular case, the board gets to say yes or no. And it doesn't set any precedence for the next guy. That's one of the reasons why we haven't created the additional language that says, okay, these are as a right, but if you have a unique circumstance, you can apply for conditional use. We don't want to sort of put that out there. Certainly, someone can come in right now and ask for zoning relief to be able to allow two units on a property. We don't see a lot of that because I think people read the writing on the wall, and if it says single-family, the likelihood that they're going to get something other than single-family is going to be difficult. So once again, the opportunity is there. Wouldn't foreclose on the opportunity of somebody coming in in that sort of situation, or similar type situation seeking zoning relief. We don't think it's going to open the floodgates, but it does not propose on the ability for someone to come in and say, you know what, this is a little bit harsh that we have to live here because of our circumstance. And the board gets to vet that, and ultimately the county board gets to say, in your particular case, I believe you, we can set some time limits on it, things like that. There's many things that we can do if someone wants to seek zoning relief from this, as opposed to, you know, putting in writing and saying, you, you know, you can do it you know, as a right.
Question would be Paul, and I'm, I, there's probably not a lot of these chances, but let's say I have a decent-sized property, could I take advantage of the accessory dwelling unit and to turn my single unit into a double unit?
No, no, here's the reason. First of all, I didn't explain at all, but this is, there are four single-family residential zoning properties in the county. There's R one, two, three, and four. R one and two are, they're called rural state properties. They have minimum lot sizes. R two, minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. R one, minimum lot size of a hundred thousand square feet, irrespective of what type of utilities you have to them. This land use is only for properties that are zoned in the R three and R four. So these properties are dense, properties to begin with, they're relatively small. As an example, we have properties in Naperville, and you'll see on the map, there aren't a lot of properties in Naperville on, on county properties because most of those Naperville properties are zoned in the R one or R two zoning districts, so they won't qualify. So those are big lots, and those lots are able to support big houses on principal arterial roadways because the lots are so large, two and a half acres to five, ten acres. But in this ordinance, you would not be able to convert a detached building to any dwelling unit when it's, if it's going to be converted as part of the principal arterial. You wouldn't have the benefit of doing both. When it's, if it's going to be converted as part of the principal arterial, you wouldn't have the benefit of doing both. And, and the reason for, because of that restriction, then it has to be in the principal dwelling unit.
Any questions from anyone on the board? Okay, um, shall we consider this at our next recommendation meeting?
Next date is January ninth.
That's, okay, then uh. We'll close the public hearing for this evening and consider the matter January nine at five thirty and room thirty-five hundred B. Thank you. Thank you.